Well, it's time to begin. So, welcome everyone. Let's start in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, ever shall be. World without end. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. So, we'll plan on meeting next Sunday. And then, I'm kind of out of material for a little while. So, you might have to take a little bit of a break while I catch up. But then, we'll start again. So, we'll see. Maybe I'll get inspired and get a week's worth done. Last, so just a review from the last time we met. We saw how as the number of humans grew on earth, so did sin. Until sin was so great that God just decided He's gonna eradicate all of life. Only one man in the family line of Cain was found to be righteous. Remember Cain's family line was because of the murder of his brother Abel, they were cursed. But there was one person who was found to be righteous in his family line, and that was Noah. Then, we looked at the Nephilim and what they were, either bad angels, or powerful men, or most likely the descendants of Seth, Adam and Eve's third son. Remember Seth was blessed, he an ancestor of Jesus. But his family began to intermarry with the descendants of Cain. So, now you have the blessed family line of Seth intermarrying with the cursed family line of Cain. And that can't be good. So, then we saw how God gave Noah instructions for building an ark. And then, we looked at the symbolism of the ark from the early church fathers, and how it especially represented Jesus. We looked at clean versus unclean animals, or what's known today as kosher. Two pairs, male and female, or the unclean, were brought on board, and seven pairs of clean animals were brought on board. Sound familiar? And then, we had a question. What does the chewing of the cud have to do with Jesus? So, I looked that up, and interesting enough, this is what I came up with, what I found. The reason for God only allowing the Jews to eat clean animals that chew the cud and have split hooves is that they represent two qualities necessary for the healthy development of a person's character. When eaten, they pass those qualities on to the person. All clean animals are herbivores. None of them are animals of prey. So, Jewish belief is that what we eat affects the entire person, including the personality. Since unclean animals have negative traits, God did not want us to eat them, lest we take on those negative traits. Good traits are connected to split hooves and chewing the cud. So, chewing the cud means that after the animal swallows its food, it regurgitates it and chews on it again. They do that. If you live on a farm, you know these things. This represents the good trait of reevaluating ourselves to make sure that we stay on a holy path. So, it's like doing an examination of conscience, right? When we look back over the day, over the week, or month, and we see, you know, I could've done better here. You know, I see where I kind of slipped up over here. And that, we reevaluate. So, it's kind of like the regurgitating of the day, regurgitating of the hour, or the time, in order to stay on that holy path. The split hooves represent having heads and hearts separated from the ground. So, it's only the legs that touch the ground, the lower part of the body. And even those are separated from the ground by hooves. So, this means we should not have our heads and hearts, our thoughts, and our emotions invested in earthly pursuits, in the lower things, in the dust, right? We should only use our lower faculties of action, arms and legs, to serve earthly pursuits. Our mind and our heart should be centered on something else. What? God, right? Yep. So, even our lower extremities should have a separation, a hoof, meaning we should only depend on them as much as necessary. The hooves needed to be split, meaning that even in our earthly pursuits, God should be able to come through and permeate them. So, when a clean animal walks, each step connects to the ground with both a right and a left side of the hoof. When we deal with earthly matters, we should have that balance of drawing good closer with the right, and pushing bad away with the left. There has to be a constant effort to keep on the straight path, not to veer to the right or to the left. And as an example, Jesus walked the holy path in perfect balance between the earthly and the heavenly. So, everything points to Jesus. How would chewing of the cud point to Jesus? There you have it. Does that make sense? You are what you eat. So, eat clean.
Noah was 600 years old when the flood came upon the earth. Together with his sons, his wife, and his sons' wives, Noah went into the ark because of the waters of the flood. Of the clean animals and the unclean, of the birds, and of everything that crawls on the ground, two by two, male and female, came to Noah into the ark, just as God had commanded him. When the seven days were over, the waters of the flood came upon the earth. In the 600th year of Noah's life, in the second month, on the 17th day of the month, on that day, all the fountains of the great abyss burst forth, and the floodgates of the sky were opened. For forty days and forty nights, heavy rain poured down on the earth. On the very same day, Noah and his son Shem, Ham, and Japheth, and Noah's wife, and the three wives of Noah's sons had entered the ark, together with every kind of wild animal, every kind of tame animal, every kind of crawling thing that crawls on the earth, and every kind of bird. Pairs of all creatures, in which there was the breath of life, came to Noah into the ark. Those that entered were male and female. Of all creatures they came, as God had commanded Noah. Then the Lord shut him in. The flood continued upon the earth for forty days. As the waters increased, they lifted the ark, so that it rose above the earth. The waters swelled and increased greatly on the earth, but the ark floated on the surface of the waters. Higher and higher on the earth swelled, until all the highest mountains under the heavens were submerged. The waters swelled 15 cubits higher than the submerged mountains. All creatures that moved on earth perished. Birds, animals, wild animals, all that on earth, as well as all humanity. Dry land with the breath of life in its nostrils died. The Lord wiped out every being on earth, human beings and animals, the crawling things and the birds of the air, all were wiped out from the earth. Only Noah and those with him in the ark were left. And when the waters had swelled on the earth for 150 days...
Okay, we'll stop at that point. That's a lot there, but it kind of, we've been building up to this moment, right? So, of the clean animals and unclean, the birds and everything that crawls on the ground, two by two, male and female, came to Noah into the ark, just as God had commanded him. So, the animals, we're told, entered the ark two by two through the open door. Okay, so the door is wide open. You know, you get two elephants coming on side by side, two by two. You need a big door, right? So, there's plenty of room for people to get in as well. Why aren't they trying to get in? So, this verse gives us a first look at why other people died in the flood. They were disobedient to God. They didn't enter the safety of God's refuge. So, the point is made very clear that faithfulness and obedience to the Lord is the way to save yourself. It's the way to salvation. Faithfulness and obedience. Two by two, they came into the ark, just as God had commanded him. So, first with Adam, and now again with Noah, the animals are placed under mankind's dominion to care for them. We are to be good stewards of creation. We've been entrusted to protect them. We're to be their refuge. Is that how we act? This is the sadness of extinction through our misuse, our poor stewardship of the natural gifts, the natural world that God has entrusted us with. So, I looked it up. There are, right now, 1 million insect species that are threatened with extinction, including the most important, bees, right? What do we do then? One in eight bird species are threatened with extinction. One in eight. Every eight birds you see, different birds. One-third of land mammals risk extinction in the next 30 years. That's pretty bad statistics, right? So, we haven't really lived up to being the good stewards that God entrusted the world to us. When the seven days were over, the waters of the flood came upon the earth. So, the storms begun. So, a week passes now since Noah and his family and the animals entered the ark. So, they got into the ark. Everyone got settled in, in their places, and they got the, the, how they're doing things down. They tried a few things, retried some things, you know, and figure out what's gonna work, what isn't. And that's when the invasion of the water begins. Slowly at first, right? But it's unrelentant, it's relentless, it builds. In the 600th year of Noah's life, in the second month, on the 17th day of the month, on that day, all the fountains of the great abyss burst forth, and the floodgates of the sky were opened. Now, when you think back to when we first started, our very first time we met, we talked about the dome that was created in the sky, above the Garden of Eden, right? And that dome of water, how it kept the oxygen level high, right? So that life could flourish in the Garden of Eden. Well, now, that dome in the sky has been opened. God unleashed it. He said, "You don't have to be up there anymore as a dome. Just fall to the earth." So, when you see on the news, like, 10 inches of rain fell in an hour, that's nothing compared to what they went through when the flood hit. Atmospheric rivers that we hear of nowadays? Yeah, that, where that water just falls from the sky. And again, those are nothing compared to what happened when the dome fell. So, with the dome now fallen, we no longer enjoy the protection and the health benefits that it offered to us. Then, we're told, "For forty days and forty nights, heavy rain poured down upon the earth." Remember the numbers, the symbolism? Forty, time of judgment. So, now we have 40 days times 40 nights. So, what do you have? Judgment times judgment? Complete judgment, right? It's done. They're over with. Life is gone. God's judgment has been made, right? So, it's making that... Forty days, the rain fell. But they're making the point, no, for 40 days and 40 nights. It was total destruction. "On the very same day, Noah and his sons, Shem, Ham, and Japheth, and Noah's wife, and the three wives of his sons had entered the ark, together with every kind of wild animal, every kind of tame animal, every kind of crawling thing that crawls on the ground, and every kind of bird. Pairs of all creatures, in which there was the breath of life, came to Noah into the ark. And those that entered were male and female. Of all creatures they came, as God has commanded Noah. Then the Lord shut him in." So, the only safe refuge in the entire earth is the ark, being inside of the ark, protected by God. And yet, outside the ark, people just think it's a really heavy rain. And they're going on living with their lives. They think, "Well, this'll stop soon. It'll play itself out. It can't rain like this forever, can it?" It can for 40 days and 40 nights, right? They think it's gonna stop raining soon, but it isn't. And it just keeps coming down, and coming down, and coming down. But they're living their lives like this is a nuisance. So, Jesus used this example when He talked about being ready for His second coming, His return. He said, "As it was in the days of Noah, so it will be in the days of the Son of Man. They were eating and drinking, marrying and giving in marriage, up to the day that Noah entered the ark. And the flood came and destroyed them all." So, Jesus went back to this story of Noah in this passage in the Gospel of Luke to say, "You need to be ready. Don't be like those people who weren't paying attention, who weren't being faithful, who were being disobedient. Don't be like them. Be obedient like Noah was, and you'll be safe." How we doing? Verse 16. "Once Noah and his family..." That's God, by the way. "...and all the families are safely in the ark, the Lord shut them in from the outside." So, this is really an example of God's tender care for us as His children, right? Like a parent tucking in a child at night. God is making sure that they're tucked in, that they're safe. He's doing it Himself. God didn't send an angel to come down and close the door. God came down Himself to do it. He wanted to make sure His children were okay. Up until the time that God shut the door to the ark, it remained open for anyone to enter, who repented and wanted to be obedient and follow God. God shut the door to secure Noah and his family, and now, they're stuck in there, right? They have to endure the confinement and the inconveniences of the ark to have life. We just went through some pretty cold weather, where everybody was stuck inside, and cabin fever hit. You know, the kids, when they came back to school, was crazy, you know? Pets, my dog was crazy, and he finally got outside, right? So, when we're forced into confinement like that, it really does take a toll on us. So, you know, that was just a few days of being inside. Imagine what they're enduring in that ark with all those animals and all those wonderful smells. So, just as we Christians deny ourselves, and we endure suffering so that we can have life in Christ, so Noah and his family endured the sufferings that they could have life. Jesus said it this way. He said, "Unless a grain of wheat dies, it cannot bear fruit." So, unless you're willing to go through a personal death, a personal suffering, you can't bear fruit with Him. You have to be willing to undergo suffering in order for glory to come through. And He showed us that Himself by His passion and cross. "The flood continued upon the earth for forty days. As the water increased, they lifted the ark, so that it rose above the earth. The waters swelled and increased greatly on the earth, but the ark floated on the surface of the water." So, the ark was lifted above the waters and floated over them. Now, the waters, as we looked last time, like the waters of sin, chaos, disorder, right? It's just crazy, churning water. And the ark, though, rises above all that, floats above it. So, when you're in the protection of the ark, you can float over those waters of death. And that's what the early church fathers were saying about how the ark is a symbol of the church for us today. In a culture of death, stay in the church. And you too can float above that culture. You can rise above it. Jesus did this several times when He walked out on the stormy seas, right? When He calmed the seas. He rose above them. Chaos, disorder, sin, death, He rose above it all. Coming out of the tomb, He rose above it. The church carries us over those waters of chaos and sin today. We see that number 40 again. Forty appears 146 times in Scripture. So, it's a very important number, of course. The wooden ark is lifted off the ground. Ark means refuge. So, Jesus, our refuge, would also be lifted up off the ground on the wood of the cross, where He would die for all sinners, including the sinners who are being destroyed by the waters of the flood. So, the wood of the cross, the wood of the ark is seen as a symbolism of the wood of the cross. The lifting up of the ark over the waters, the lifting up of Jesus over the earth. "From the cross flow rivers of living grace," are sacraments, right? From the suffering that Jesus underwent, grace came through that. So, we, this illustrates, you know, the rivers of living water flowing from the cross. The seven rivers are the seven sacraments that we have in the church. Each of those sacraments gives a different grace. All part of the Lord's total grace, but a different kind. That's what we have, of course, going above our sanctuary area there, showing those rivers of living water. Extreme unction is another word for anointing of the sick. Very old school, but still known by that, though, officially. So, what did they feed all those animals? Well, we saw in the Garden of Eden, you know, before sin entered, the animals, a plants rather than each other. It was only when sin came in that they started to kill one another to eat, as with sin came death. So, God could've suppressed their appetites as well, right? Just said, "You're not gonna be hungry for 40 days and 40 nights." So, we're told, "Higher and higher on the earth, the waters swell, until all the highest mountains under the heavens were submerged." Not just rib mountain, right? All the highest mountains were submerged. The waters swelled 15 cubits higher than the submerged mountains. So, it wasn't just to the tip of the mountains, because somebody could've climbed up to the top of the mountain and been standing there thinking, "Oh, I made it." Yeah, yeah. What's a cubit? The length of your arm. Yeah. Yeah, so 15 of these. Nobody's gonna be that tall, right? So, there's no land left anywhere on earth. It's all covered. So, just to make sure everything's destroyed, the waters rise that high above the mountains. Now, in Hebrew, the wording that's used to describe the waters is as if they've won a military victory. So, the waters are the army, the invading army. As they swell, now, your Bibles may say they triumphed, they overwhelmed, they conquered, depending on the version that you have. Those are all kind of a military term. They conquered all life. And they were allowed to stay and oppress the earth for 150 days. So, the army has invaded, the army of water, and it has taken up its residence. "All the creatures that moved on earth perished. Birds, tame animals, wild animals, all that teemed on the earth, as well as all humankind. Everything on dry land with the breath of life in its nostrils died. The Lord wiped out every being on earth, human beings and animals. The crawling things, the birds of the air, all were wiped out from the earth. Only Noah and those with him in the ark were left." So, everything, maybe some fish survived. Everything else is destroyed. Silence has filled the earth, except for the creaking of the wood of the ark as it floated over the waters. "When the waters had swelled on the earth for 150 days, God remembered Noah and all the animals, wild and tame, that were with him in the ark. So, God made a wind sweep over the earth, and the waters began to subside." Did God ever forget them? No. No. So, this is, remember, we talked about the term for this, anthropomorphic, right? Turning God into a human, giving God human qualities so that we can better understand God, you know? God never forgot. But in our minds, to say, "After 150 days, God remembered them, and sent the wind to sweep over the earth, the waters began to subside." That takes us to the end of chapter seven. Clear as mud? Be a lot of mud on the earth.
Do they ever come up with where the ark landed?
The question is, did they ever figure out where the ark landed? Hold on to that question, sir. Because we're gonna get to it. Nope, this one's not gonna work. "So, God remembered Noah and all the animals, wild and tame, that were with him in the ark. So, God made a wind sweep over the earth, and the waters began to subside. The fountains of the abyss and the floodgates of the sky were closed, and the downpour from the sky was held back. Gradually, the waters receded from the earth. At the end of 150 days, the waters had so diminished that in the seventh month, on the 17th day of the month, the ark came to rest on the mountains of Ararat." What stands out from that? What's that? The number seven? Yeah. The numbers, yep, 150. So, we're seeing these numbers just occur over and over and over. So, they gotta be important, right? They wouldn't be in there that much. So, chapter eight. "God remembered. After the great military triumph of the water upon the earth for 150 days, God remembers Noah. And by God's mercy, for another 150 days, the waters subside and leave." The judgment's done. Now, it is the triumph of mercy in saving humanity through Noah's family and restoring the earth. So, the only thing that tempers judgment is mercy. God's mercy will always triumph over His judgment. Very important to remember that. God's mercy is always stronger than His judgment. This is what the whole, we got the picture over there by the confessional, the whole feast of divine mercy, this is what it's about. "On that day, on Divine Mercy Sunday, the floodgates of God's mercy are opened, just like the water being opened from the sky, to fall down upon the earth, to anyone who's willing to take it in, to anyone who's faithful and obedient to receiving that mercy." His mercy always triumphs over His judgment. Verse two, "The fountains of the abyss and the floodgates of the sky were closed, and the downpour from the sky was held back." So the waters that came up from the ground and the waters that came down from the dome in the sky are both turned off. So just, um, a few weeks ago, I saw an article where it talked about how scientists recently declared that earth has an underground ocean in the planet's lower mantle, 400 miles beneath the crust of the earth. And the underground ocean consists of water contained inside of a blue rock known as ringwoodite, ringwoodite. And it may be the size of all earth's oceans put together. And this illustration that's on this page is actually from the article that the scientists put together. So you can see at the top, you can see the, the earth, the land, right? And underneath is the mantle for 400 miles, and then below that is this huge ocean of water. So this is probably what God tapped into to bring up from the great abyss. Gradually, the waters receded from the earth. At the end of 150 days, the waters had so diminished that in the seventh, seventh month, on the seventeenth day of the month, the ark came to rest on the mountains of Ararat. So again, seven appears twice, once says seven, and then once in seventeen. Seven means completed, like seven days in a week is a complete week, right? Seven equals complete. So, uh, in the seventh month, the flood was complete. Hundred and fifty, that number appears 38 times in the Bible. It also means completeness, but in a special way, it means the completeness of divine purpose or a new beginning. So here, 150 days in, we have, the, the destruction is complete and a new beginning is started. Mount Ararat was where the ark came to rest. That's, uh, mountains in northern Turkey. So, um, at first, you know, the ark would get caught on the top of one of those mountain peaks, but as the waters diminished, it would find solid rest. Now again, imagine being in the ark. It comes to rest at the peak of a mountain, and the waters keep drying. What's that ark gonna end up doing? Sliding in the mud, right? It's gonna slide, imagine taking that ride with all those animals. And you're not expecting it when it happens, right? Hopefully this one works. So the waters continued to diminish until the 10th month. And on the first day of the 10th month, the top of the mountains appeared. At the end of 40 days, Noah opened the hatch of the ark that he had made, and he released a raven. It flew back and forth until the waters dried off from the earth. Then he released a dove to see if the waters had lessened on the earth. But the dove could find no place to perch, and it returned to him in the ark, for there was water over all the earth. Putting out his hand, he caught the dove and drew it back to him inside the ark. He waited yet seven days more, and again, released the dove from the ark. In the evening, the dove came back to him, and there in its bill was a plucked-off olive leaf. So Noah knew that the waters had diminished on the earth. He waited yet another seven days and then released the dove, but this time it did not come back. In the 601st year, in the first month, on the first day of the month, the water began to dry up on the earth. Noah then removed the covering of the ark and saw that the surface of the ground had dried. In the second month, on the 27th day of the month, the earth was dry. This was not a quick dry, right? This took some time. It's like when you go through the car wash here in Edgar, right? And, and it, the fans blow the water off, you know, the quickness wasn't that fast, you know? Car stayed wet for a long time. Now, yes. So Noah was 600 years old when he went into the ark. So I think that's what that's referring to. Yeah, yeah, I wondered that too, and I think that's referring to his age. Except that this is in Jewish months. So it's a little different way of keeping time, but, yeah. So we've got some birds now that are entering the story. They're gonna become pretty important to us. The waters continued to diminish until the 10th month, and on the first day of the 10th month, the top of the mountains appeared. So the ark came to rest on the top of the mountain. At the end of 40 days, Noah opened the hatch of the ark that he had made. So forty here represents, you know, that sense of completeness, but also a generation. A generation has been completed. A generation is gone from the earth. And due to the flood, that entire generation's been destroyed. So Noah opens the hatch in the ark. He's opening the possibility of life entering into the dead world. Jesus would one day open the doors of heaven by opening the door to his tomb, offering eternal life to the world that was destroyed by sin. So in that same sense, is Noah throwing open the hatch in the ark? So Jesus rolled back the stone of the tomb. New life, a new kind of life is entering into a dead world. When Jesus rose from the dead, he didn't just come back, um, just as he was. He didn't just, you know, rise from the dead with the same old body and everything that he had. Right? He came with a new body. He had a new life, a glorified body. He still had the marks from his old body, right? But his, it was so different that people didn't recognize him. And then he taught his disciples how to live this new life. And what is the new life built upon but love? So, um, the new life is what Noah is, he's, he opens a hatch, and it's just, it's a dead world. He doesn't see plants, he doesn't see anything but mud. So he sends life into the dead world. Is what Jesus did, rising from the dead. Noah then released a raven. It flew back and forth until the waters dried off from the earth. So ancient navigators would use birds to find land when they're out at sea. A raven gave direction to sailors because it would head directly to land. It would fly high in the air, it would spot land, and it would fly directly to it, so they would say, "Go that way." They would navigate the boat in the direction the raven went. Ravens can fly long distances. They can fly a long ways. But here, we're told, the raven flies back and forth because there's no land, there's no place for it to land, to go to, right? So in verse seven, "It flew back and forth until the waters dried from the earth." So Noah sees the raven going back and forth, and he realizes there's, there's nowhere for it to land. Then he released a dove to see if the waters had lessened on the earth, but the dove could find no place to perch, and it returned to him in the ark, for there was water over all the earth. Putting out his hand, he caught the dove and drew it back to him inside the ark. He waited yet seven days more, a complete week, and again, released the dove from the ark. In the evening, the dove came back to him, and there in its bill was a plucked-off olive leaf. Imagine what that olive leaf meant to Noah. There's life, there's life. You know, um, yeah, it had, that had to just be, they had to be celebrating, right? In the ark. So Noah knew that the waters had diminished on the earth. Whereas the, um, the raven can fly a long distance, doves and pigeons, um, don't fly long flights like that. So, um, a sailor would, um, would let a dove or a pigeon go, and, um, if they came back right away, that meant there was no land nearby for them to go. And the dove returns to Noah with an olive leaf. Olives, uh, olive leaf is a symbol of new life and fertility to come after the flood. It's a sign of hope, it's a sign of winning, right? What did the, um, at the Olympic Games, what did they receive in the beginning? Not a gold medal and olive wreath they would wear on their head. St. Paul talks about this, he said, "You all, you run this race to get, uh, uh, a wreath made of olives that, that is gonna, you know, decay and be gone in a short time. I'm telling you, run the race of salvation, so you have eternal life." So St. Paul uses that, that olive, um, wreath to make a point there. So it's a, yeah, it's a sign of new life, fertility, hope, there's, there's life. Noah waited yet another seven days and then released the dove, but this time it didn't come back. So the third time, the dove is released, this time it doesn't return. So it shows him there's enough vegetation now on the earth, it's dried up enough that he can live on its own outside the refuge of the ark. Again, that had to be a great sign of hope for all of them within the ark. In the 601st year, in the first month, on the first day of the month, you get in the point, the water began to dry up on the earth. Noah then removed the covering of the ark and saw the surface of the ground had dried. So that word first is used three times, for the year, the month, and the day. First, you know, means one, so it's, uh, in Jewish thought, it's always a symbol of God. Three divine persons, one God. The water of chaos and death and disorder is drying up, it's shrinking away before God's holy presence. And since things are safer on earth now, Noah begins to open the ark a little bit more because the refuge of the ark isn't needed quite as much anymore. He's getting a little more comfortable opening it up. In the second month, on the 27th day of the month, the earth was dry. So the waters of chaos have been defeated. Remember the, how that sense of an army, the water was the army coming in and invading? Now the, the invasion is, is over with, they're, they've been dispelled, cast out. God's new creation has been set free in a new world that's now ordered to God. So when we look at the flood, it was a total of 371 days, so just over a year. For 150 days, it rained. For 74 days, the waters abated or, or went away. For seven days afterward, um, Noah sent out the dove, and then seven days after that, he sent out the dove. And then seven days later, he sent the dove for the final time. There were 29 days after Noah removed the covering from the ark, and 57 days later, Noah would disembark from the ark. So they've been in there a long time. This one work. I don't know why it's doing that. Then God said to Noah, "Go out of the ark together with your wife and your sons and your sons' wives. Bring out with you every living thing that is with you, all creatures, be they birds or animals or crawling things that crawl on the earth, and let them abound on the earth, and be fertile and multiply on it." So Noah came out, together with his sons and his wife and his son's wives and all the animals, all the birds, all the crawling creatures that crawl on the earth, went out of the ark by families. Then Noah built an altar to the Lord. Choosing from every clean animal and every clean bird, he offered burnt offerings on the altar. When the Lord smelled the sweet odor, the Lord said to himself, "Never again will I curse the ground because of human beings, since the desires of the human heart are evil from youth. Nor will I ever again strike down every living being as I have done. All the days of the earth, seed time and harvest, cold and heat, summer and winter, and day and night shall not cease." It says in the middle, "The crawling creature, all the animals, the birds, everything, went out of the ark by families." They went into the ark two by two. So they had a long time alone in the ark together. No cable TV. Then God said to Noah, "Go out of the ark together with your wife, your son, your son's wives. Bring out with you every living thing, let them abound on earth, and be fertile and multiply on it." So now we see God is talking directly to Noah. So this, once again, is showing us how important and righteous that Noah is to God. He's speaking face to face, there's not too many people in Scripture that God does that to. Not according to Scripture. So the question was, all that while that God was, that Noah was in the ark, God wasn't speaking to him. Remember how it said a few verses back, how God remembered Noah after 150 days? So it probably was pretty quiet. So, uh, again, this was, would really be testing the faithfulness and obedience of, of Noah, you know? So, yeah, he's, he's pretty important for God to be talking to him now face to face. And God commands Noah and his family to go forth from the ark of refuge into this new world, into the new Garden of Eden. The refuge of the ark is no longer needed because sin and evil have been destroyed in the flood. Or were they? If you recall back, Genesis, chapter one, at creation, the very first command that God gave was to be fertile and multiply. In the new creation, God once again commands all living things to repopulate the earth. Go out, be fertile, and multiply. So Noah came out, together with his sons and his wife and his son's wives and all the animals, all the birds, all the crawling creatures, went out of the ark by families. So they're coming out from their tomb, that ark. So it's, it's drawing some, uh, some parallels here to Lazarus. Remember, the friend of Jesus, Lazarus, um, had died, and Jesus waited four days before he went to the tomb. And, um, Lazarus's sisters came out to meet him, and they, and they said, "You know, if, if you would have been here, he wouldn't have died. But even now, I know that, um, he'll come back, you know, if you say so." And, and Jesus said, "I do will it, I'm going to bring him back." And they're like, "But it's been four days, he's gonna smell." You know, "Surely, Lord, by now there'll be a stench," they say. For most ancient people, including the ancient Jews, to, uh, they would say that it took four days for a person to truly be dead. Have you heard stories of people like at wake services, sitting up or waking up? You know? Or waking up, you know? You know, so a lot of times that, so that people would think somebody is dead, and they're not. For a while even, in England, they would tie a bell. When they buried someone, they would put a string tied to a bell, and then the nightkeeper of the cemetery would listen. If he heard a bell, they would quickly dig up the person because they weren't dead. So, yeah, so you, they said you, by the fourth day, if a person is awake, they're truly dead by then. And so they would say it takes four days for their soul to reach Sheol, the place of death. And so by four days, they're truly gone. So Lazarus exiting the tomb at the command of Jesus, Noah and his family and all the animals are coming out from their entombment in the ark at the command of God. Yeah, animals would be pretty wild coming out after being penned up for that long. If you've ever seen calves, cows come out in springtime, the first time they're let out, it's called gambling, where they like jump up and down, and they just kick their hind legs in the air. Fozzie does that, you know, we call it the, I just lost the word. He's got the zoomies, the zoomies, right? Yeah, he has that every day. But he really has that when he's cooped up for a long time, where he just runs in circles and jumps up and down and barks for no reason. That's what animals would be doing, yeah. And that's what the people would be doing too. I mean, I think I'd be jumping up and down too, to get out after that long, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so the question is, the space in the ark was tight to begin with, but now they're having families, right? There's even more animals in there. Yeah, they were ready to get off of that ark, yeah. Yeah, it was, I'm sure it was getting to be... Or did they? Yeah, let's see. Carson, they were in there for more than nine months, right? So they were in about, what, 14 months or so? So the animals leave the ark to go out and repopulate the earth. "Then we're told, 'Noah built an altar to the Lord, and he chose from every clean animal and bird, and he offered burnt offerings on the altar. And when the Lord smelled that sweet odor, the Lord said to himself, 'Never again will I curse the ground and human beings because the desires of their heart are evil; nor will I ever strike down every living being again. All the days on the earth, seed time, harvest, cold, heat, summer, winter, day and night shall not cease.'" So Noah builds this altar, and the sweet smell was pleasing to God. I mean, it's like, you know, when you're cooking a steak, right? That smell, like especially on the grill, it's like, wow, that smells great, right? It's, the aroma is pleasing to God. So this is why we use incense, right? The sweet smell, not everybody thinks it's a sweet smell, but the sweet smell rises up to heaven to appease God and to... Try to change God's mind, right? So in this case of a burnt offering, we're not trying to change God's mind about something to say, "Hey, I'll give you this gift of a sweet aroma. You give me this in return," right? But in this case, it's an offering of thanksgiving and praise to God for seeing them safely through the flood. And so that smoke from the fire would rise up. Where the floodwaters cleanse the world of sin, right? But, you know, they leave human hearts unchanged. And so the problem of sin, it wasn't solved, right? We need a new kind of water for that. So the water of the flood took away the sin of the world that was there then. But it didn't take away evil. We need a new water. Baptismal water cleanses our hearts and soul of sin. But of course, that's not gonna happen until the coming of Jesus. So we've got a while to wait for that. But I just had a baptism this afternoon, and the prayers, a lot of them refer back to the flood, at the waters of the flood, you know, and the water that flowed from the side of Jesus, the grace that we looked at with the sacraments, right? That water plays very, very much a part in our sacramental life in the church. Just a couple more things, and then we'll stop. "All the days of the earth, seed time, harvest, cold, heat, summer, winter, shall not cease." So with that, God is now making a new covenant with Noah and his family, right? In this new covenant, God promises to maintain the natural order without the threat of another flood. So this is a covenant with really all of creation. And God's saying, "I will not do this again." And we'll stop there with the end of chapter eight. So next week, we'll pick up on chapter nine and go from there. Thank you. Yeah, so God never gets rid of the devil or evil, right? With the waters of the flood, right? They didn't, it didn't do it. Yeah, it didn't cut it. But Jesus will have an answer for that, yeah. Yeah, very good. Good, stay warm, everyone. You're welcome.